Meeting for April.
Seven, like suggested.
It was called to order.
Mike is on Planning Commission for April seventh. Meeting is called to order at six oh one. Could we have a roll call, please?
Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Sparks Gillis?
Here.
Member Ziegler?
Here.
Vice Chair Adler?
Uh, here.
Chair Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Bill, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So we're open for, uh, does anybody want to change the order of the agenda or make any changes to it as presented?
Nope.
Nope, I'll move approval of the agenda order.
I'll second.
Uh, moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five oh. Uh, public comment, public is free to comment on any item not on the agenda, agenda or can comment on items on the consent agenda at this time. There's nobody here. Uh, nobody has a hand up online. So we'll close public comments and go to the consent items. Would anybody like to approve our poll?
Chair, I would like to pull approve the item B, the minutes for March thirteenth for a brief discussion.
Okay, anything else? Uh, can I get a motion to approve items A and C of the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five oh. Okay, so, um, Bill, you can have the floor.
Thank you.
On item B.
So the, um, meeting minutes for our joint session, our workshop, uh, it was a very informative, very worthwhile workshop. There was a lot of dialogue that went back and forth. But as I look through the agenda, uh, I see Planning Manager Castillo, Planning Manager Castillo, Planning Manager Castillo, um, and I only see one of our commissioners mentioned once. It's not about name recognition or anything else, but I think there was some quality dialogue taking place, uh, that's not referenced in here. For example, uh, I asked about the history of the prohibition of A-frame signs and Aaron did an excellent thorough job explaining the history and some of the current concerns that he had. Aaron brought up concerns about the few responses that we had in the survey that was conducted in reference to the number of businesses that we have. That's not referenced here. Uh, Esther Bates, uh, referenced a publication regarding, uh, color palette that apparently has been a very long and ongoing discussion. Uh, she produced the book. There's no mention of that here. I think it doesn't create good optics for our community when they don't see that we are conducting dialogue and that we are participating. I think the, uh, the minutes convey the very minimum nuts and bolts of what took place. Rafael, you did an excellent job. There's not taking anything away from you. I'm just concerned about, uh, the lack of mention of any of us, uh, and including the, uh, the, uh, committee that was here. Uh, there's nothing here from any of us other than briefly for Jack. And, and I welcome comments from many of my fellow commissioners.
Uh, minutes are action minutes, so they're not comprised of what's, uh, the dialogue of what each and every single member says. So it's supposed to give a synopsis of what was discussed and that's what these are. Um, the city moved away from a elongated list of, uh, minutes and dialogue because, um, for the very reason of certain members of, of bodies, including city council and DRC would, uh, describe, well, I didn't say this and I didn't say that, where I didn't discuss this and we didn't discuss that. So the action, so instead the city manager moved everyone to action minutes, uh, last year, and this is just reflection of the actions that were taking place, no more nor less. If a resident has a concern or wants to go back and, and view everything, and this was a very long meeting, clocking in about two hours and a half, uh, most certainly planned, those videos are always available on our website. Uh, they're up and, uh, that they can watch, uh, the entire, um, meeting in its whole and its entirety. Uh, but again, the, the point of the minutes is to capture the action only.
I think my concern, and I, I, I understand Rafael and I appreciate that response. I think my concern is we have a couple of appointed bodies here that our, uh, community, uh, wants to know is earning its pay and participating, and you don't get a good reflection. I, I understand you don't want minutia in here and you certainly don't want to create he said, she said kinds of scenarios. But I know I for one would appreciate a, a bit more detail so that the community does see that we are in fact active in what we're doing. Thank you.
No comment I have, it's, 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 it's a good point. And, and I do remember when we did the change in the minutes some years ago or a year and a half, whenever it was. And it perhaps in, in this instance, especially with a joint meeting, maybe a little bit more detail would have been, would have been, uh, appropriate. Um, I, I know where, where the city's going to, cause I've sat through meetings as Jack and I did, where I didn't say that and I meant, and he said, and it becomes forever, but, but your point well taken.
And I'll just add, uh, for the commission that the direction for action minutes did come from city council. So that's where we're getting that, uh, direction from and how we're conducting the minutes. And like Rafael said, um, the full recording is available for anyone who wants a deeper dive into what occurred at the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Uh, can I get a motion to approve item B of the consent agenda? That came out of that, the, the comment.
I'll make a motion to approve item B.
Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes five oh. Okay, uh, ex parte communication, is that next on our list? Yes. Anybody have anything they'd like to?
Not so much ex parte communication, although I did have a couple of community members reference the, something that actually is actually under the purview of the city, which is the lawsuit against the Wildwood project. And I was just curious if we could just get an update on that, I just.
That's not a, that's not a part of this item, so refrain that to commissioner comment.
Yeah, so ex parte communications.
Till we get to item seven, then you can bring that up.
There you go. But we'll review, uh, ex parte communications right now or for, um, any communications you may have had with the applicant, uh, of the public hearing item outside of, um, public comment or what's been, uh, submitted to public generally.
Uh, my bad on that, I just was asked about that by a couple of citizens and so I thought I'd mention that, okay.
Okay. Uh, could we have a staff report on?
Um, before we do, yeah, well, no, 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 public hearings, is that where I'm at, public hearings?
No, we, we're just starting public hearings.
Right, and I have a conflict. I'm too close to my business and my properties to the hearing. So I'm going to recuse myself because I'm within 500 feet of that project.
Okay. So noted, Aaron Peterson recuses himself at six ten. Uh, so moving on to, uh, public hearings, item five A. Uh, could we have, uh, staff report, please?
A public hearing to consider adoption of Planning Commission Resolution twenty five oh two for an amendment to a previously approved development plan for proposed exterior and interior tenant improvement and proposed five thousand nine hundred and six square foot addition for proposed market and restaurant located at seventeen fourteen Mission Drive, APN one three nine two four oh oh three four, with a finding that the proposed amendment is in con- in conformance with the adopted class thirty-two exemption to the California Environmental, Environmental Quality Act and qualifies for a class three CEQA exemption.
Okay. Uh, any questions of the staff report?
Thank you. Uh, so before you this evening is, uh, as the item has spoken seventeen fourteen Mission Drive, it's an amendment. Um, there we go. So the original project was approved, uh, by the planning commission on August first, uh, twenty twenty-two. The, what was approved at that date was an addition for five thousand seven hundred thirteen square feet, uh, proposed, uh, restaurant Deli and Market. Uh, the pulmonary work that the applicant had done after the, uh, planning commission approval, uh, discovered that the proposed improvements that were originally identified and approved by the planning commission as part of the entitlement process, uh, would be ca- too costly. So a lot of structural work would need to get done. Uh, so instead the applicant is seeking an amendment to the approved development plan. Um, since we no longer have development plans in our books, um, this changed over during the middle of this application. Uh, that's why it's referenced as permit, because that's what's now in our books. So just to give you a little identification of where we're at in the world, uh, the project site is, uh, located in the, uh, village, uh, his own village mixed use. Um, it's general plan designation is a tourist related village commercial. Um, it's just located, uh, just east of the, uh, Mission Drive, Al Sol Road, uh, intersection, uh, located there on red. Um, so this is adjacent to the seventeen oh four site that's currently under construction for the nine cottage units and is also adjacent, uh, to, uh, Mission San Yen as to the east. And then directly to the south, um, is the city parking lot and to the north is, uh, Mission Drive as well as another hotel, um, use and sort of to the kitty corner is the Vets, uh, Vets Memorial Hall. So the, uh, proposed project is, uh, before you, it's an amendment is to eliminate the deli portion of the proposed project and create a market restaurant. Um, it is to reconfigure the, the applicant, uh, is reconfiguring, uh, the site plan, um, is doing a larger proposed addition to fit, uh, new operations and again to avoid the costly structural upgrades to the existing building. So the applicant is proposing to increase the addition from five thousand seven hundred thirteen square feet to approximately five thousand nine hundred square feet, um, hundred eighty-seven, uh, square foot in size, uh, which would be an addition as well as, um, converting the former drive-through lanes into commercial spaces. Um, other previously improved improvements that have not changed included the demolition of the side at Porter Caucher and the entryway. Um, you do see the red circles, um, on your screen. Um, let me see if I can highlight those. So those red circles here are the proposed driveways as a part of the DRC meeting that had the item back in February. Um, they are proposing to flip these, so instead the, uh, furthest drive from the, uh, intersection would be the entryway or the closest drive would be the entryway and the furthest drive would be the exit. And again, this would allow for a potential better stacking and queuing. So that, that's included as a part of, uh, staff's, uh, condition of approvals before this evening.
Could I interrupt just a minute? Uh, you said the one closest to the mission would be the exit? It looks like on the drawing.
No, it's that the, so that's currently as proposed, the exit is closest to mission and the intersection of mission.
Okay.
So flip the two, so.
Okay, so the entrance is the one closest to the mission.
Right, that would make the most sense for stacking.
Could it be a right turn only?
So we'll, we'll, we'll get to the presentation and then we'll, uh, go, uh, commission your questions. Um, so again, um, this is the proposed landscaping plan. This has also been revised from the originally approved project. Uh, the applicant is proposing the reuse of the existing olive trees that are on site. Um, landscaping on the west side of the project has been reduced to accommodate the proposed larger addition, um, as well as there's additional now new landscaping along the southern property boundary, which is the city parking lot and which now includes landscaping and, and a pathway, uh, to, uh, the onsite parking as well as a drainage basin to accommodate a potential runoff from, or potential runoff from the neighboring projects. So again, we, we did revise conditions of approval to sort of match the two projects together. This is the proposed, uh, floor plan. And again, the floor plan revised to eliminate the deli use area, uh, including, and then including a market with seating. So again, it is a revision of the project, but it's overall about the same in terms of, of, of the uses. So the applicant did have, uh, a change in the, uh, project architecture. Uh, the applicant is revising the approved exterior brick stucco, uh, mix to an all stucco mix with a half timbering. It utilizes sort of this lighter red hue for the exterior paint and a brown hue for the exterior and proposed half timbers. So again, uh, this portion of the proposed project has been viewed, uh, reviewed by the DRC. The DRC was okay with the, uh, proposed changes, the amendments, which is why this is carrying forward this evening. Uh, one thing to note, um, are the elevations, particularly here, this west elevation. Um, this elevation was discussed at DRC, it's included in your staff report, um, about the, the lack of windows and, and items in terms of the facade. Um, as mentioned at the DRC, this project amendment came back to us in twenty, late twenty twenty-three, um, went through the motions, uh, three rounds of, of plan review until it went before the DRC, but during that time we did have a code change. Um, so the applicant did meet majority of the code items, uh, but as this was in flux, um, the, the blank facade, um, area was one area where it did trip up and, and the DRC did propose some modifications which are carried over into, uh, the proposed conditions of approval. So there are three items that we're going to go over in terms of, uh, consistency with, uh, pertinent city documents. The first one is the general plan. Uh, the proposed project is considered an infill project. It is consistent with the intent of the tourist village commercial and land use designation. Um, is consistent with pertinent policies of the twenty forty-five general plan. Those are all listed actually in your staff report, but to summarize what those were, where's infill, uh, mix of uses and development and high density, high visibility areas. Now, one policy, which is, uh, CD or Community Design Element Policy two point six, uh, requires lights to be shielded. Uh, staff has added a condition to ensure conformity with that policy as well as the design, design district overlay. And we'll get into that in a minute. Uh, but again, that is a requirement of, of shielded lights. And again, the applicant, uh, provided this project and, and as a matter of fact, their last submittal was right before the, the new, uh, objective standards went into effect. And so we recognize that, that they were sort of playing with these, uh, balls and that were juggling up in the air. And so we are recommending that condition to move forward. The second pertinent document that this project, uh, has to be in conformance with is our, um, adopted design guidelines. As mentioned before, uh, we have objective design standards that have been, um, recently adopted in, in the village area. Um, although these, uh, design guidelines from the late nineteen eighties remain in place, um, until these are, um, actually replaced and not released. Um, so the proposed amendment meets the pertinent guidelines in, in terms of continuing the use of the half timbers and add timbers to the building facade. Uh, that's actually a change from the, uh, previously approved project. Uh, the proposed timbers are darker in color to provide the contrast. The parking is oriented to the side of the building and the proposed roof remains a composite roof material, which is consistent with the existing building. So again, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of guidelines that are in there and we need to pick out which ones are, are pertinent to the proposed project. Um, there is one item that, that the project did not meet and that is the design guidelines discussion of windows. Uh, our guidelines recommend the use of, uh, dividing panes. Um, so the applicant proposes to maintain the windows with, without the panes. And so the, this, uh, the building has no panes in it throughout. Uh, the building's actually older than the object or older than the design guidelines that were approved back in the late nineteen eighties. Um, DRC did request the project return to review the windows as a part of the building permit zoning clearance process. And so again, a condition is included for this specific item to return to the DRC. So the hope is if the planning commission approves this item tonight, the applicant will work with city staff to quickly get that back on the DRC agenda. So we don't delay any sort of building permit, not having, uh, the project hang up in the building permit process. Uh, the last pertinent document is a combo of the two. It's our zoning ordinance. So the proposed uses are consistent with the standards in the village mixed use district or VMU. And sort of just as a reminder, uh, that the village mixed use replaced what was, uh, known as the TRC. So we no longer have a TRC somewhere, we do have a VMU. Uh, the proposed use is located within design district one, uh, overlay. So again, objective standards are act as a starting point for this project. And because this project came in midstream, um, we very much, uh, put the project against the, uh, the new standards to which you have a table that's in your staff report that sort of identifies all those standards and how it meets those. Um, the proposed amendment met the majority of the objective standards except for the following, uh, lighting, uh, which I'm going to discuss in the next slide, as well as the unarticulated blank walls. So, uh, in your staff report, we did note that the east elevation, uh, near, uh, the parking city lot and near the, uh, near the, uh, near Mission Drive, these are walls that didn't, these are walls that, uh, didn't meet, uh, the facade requirements. So, um, in this instance, the city staff had proposed to the DRC and the DRC is recommending that additional half timbers, uh, be continued on, on both elevations. Uh, the applicant could also utilize windows, um, and that's as a part of the review of the existing windows, um, so that they do have options to move forward. Um, if the applicant had shown those, had shown additional half timbers, uh, in the project drawings, it would have met the objective standards. Um, but again, the, the applicant will have two options to move forward. Uh, the lighting shall be down, down shielded. So as you can see there, the image on your, uh, screen right there is the proposed lighting. And again, those lights, uh, were proposed as a part of the original amendment, uh, back in December of twenty twenty-three. However, we have our new standards that have gone through from both the general plan perspective as well as zoning. Uh, so again, we are recommending that those be shielded consistent with not only our general plan, uh, but our objective design standards. So going through all those items, um, we are, you know, there, there's a, as a part of any sort of entitlement process, we needed to go to a CEQA, uh, examination. That's California Environmental Quality Act. Um, the proposed project did include a class thirty-two infill exemption, which was implied by the planning commission. They, so the proposed amendment includes a larger addition than what was previously opposed. However, that addition is, is less than ten percent. And the proposed project qualifies for both a class thirty-two infill exemption as well as a, a class three exemption. So I wanted to point that out as well, uh, for new construction. Uh, typically that, that would have been the one, uh, I would have utilized, uh, but not the thirty-two. Uh, but then I wasn't making decisions back then. Um, so again, we've included the class three exemption because it is, uh, includes construction of a, of a new commercial structure less than ten thousand square feet. And in this case, it's the addition, um, in Florida or in the urbanized area, uh, it, it is in our considered a city limit. So it is considered in the urbanized area. It is zoned for this type of use in the village mixed use, uh, which is commercial. And all the necessary public services are available, including water, uh, and sewer. And the surrounding area is not environmentally sensitive. So at this point, there's no proposed, um, grading, there's no, uh, there's little snow grading. Uh, there's no proposed excavation. Um, so because of that, it, it, we are recommending the class three be added as well. So based on our review of the project, based on the DRC recommendations, uh, city staff is proposing that, uh, that the proposed project is consistent with the adopted general plan and zoning ordinance as conditioned. Uh, city staff and the DRC are recommending the planning commission adopt Resolution twenty five oh two for an amendment to a previously approved development plan, uh, for proposed exterior and interior tenant improvements and a proposed five thousand nine hundred six square foot addition, uh, for proposed market restaurant located at seventeen fourteen Mission Drive, uh, with a finding that the proposed amendment is in conformance with the adopted class thirty-two exemption and as well as qualifies for a class three exemption. And with that, I'll open up the questions from the commissioners.
Anybody have a question on the staff report?
I just have one. Um, the windows are not in conformance, but you stated very clearly, the structure was built before the new standards came into play. Uh, do you have a sense of what the DRC hopes to accomplish with the applicant?
So the DRC just hoped to, as I believe it was a new, uh, again, this city staff takes a little bit different approach from previous city staff. So we, we go through the documents and we give you the pertinent, uh, items. And I believe that item has kind of caught a lot of people off guard that it sits in there. And so it, it perked their interest that potentially, oh, maybe we do want to see the divided windows. So that really what it is. Um, but again, from a city staff perspective, the building was there prior to nineteen eighty-nine. So therefore, uh, they're doing an addition. It makes sense that typically we don't ask for something to, to be funky. And so, which is why city staff was okay, even at the, uh, initial approval to carry on the existing motif in the windows.
Who else, Brandon?
I go.
You go ahead.
Um, just my question from before in terms of, uh, exiting the parking lot, but it's going to be right turn or?
It is not, so it will have the available, obviously the entryways in, in and out only. There's no dual, but it, it's not limited at this point, um, to, to be that. We can always condition as a part of, uh, the project approval that the city engineer take a look at that to ensure that, uh, it captures left turn, left out, just to make sure. But based on the traffic reports that were initially completed for this project in class thirty-two, there was no issue in terms of the turning movements there.
I mean, I think there will be, but.
Yeah, it's stacking is a concern and that, and that, which is why city staff is recommending the flip, uh, because that way it gives you a little bit more space to hit the stacking. Um, particularly I, I know I drive that segment a lot during the lunch hour. Um, just so if anyone wants to stalk me during my lunch hour. And, um, you know, it, it, it is tough to make that left turn, especially when you start having a lot of cars stacking and then some people sort of just cheat code it in and do the elongated left. Um, but again, it, it's not, it's not risen to the level of requiring, uh, uh, signage for a right turn in, right turn out.
Yeah, I remember when we originally, uh, considered this, there was a lot of discussion on the, on that traffic and the traffic studies did say that there wasn't a problem.
Correct, and, and the traffic study and the discussion there really focused on level of service. Um, it should have been stated at that meeting and I'm going to state it now that, uh, for sequel purposes, it's, uh, it is very much, um, uh, it is a VMT, vehicle miles traveled, which this project actually nets it out pretty well. Um, so from a secret perspective, that's done. As far as sort of a, a trips perspective and, and the turning, the turn movements, um, again, it just doesn't rise to that level of significance in terms of, of mandating those requirements. And I understand traffic is a big deal, but you, one needs to understand that, you know, who are the majority of these users of these sites? Uh, particularly being at the very walkable portion of the village. A lot, a lot of folks will, will walk to there and, and, and pedestrian safety is, is of the utmost importance.
So is, does Caltrans have any plans to, uh, re-stripe that area to allow, uh, say a left-hand turn coming in?
Not at this point, uh, they will have to, they are required to get an encroaching permit from Caltrans and it is that point where Caltrans may require additional, um, items of them to do for safety. Uh, but again, that is in the realm of Caltrans to make that decision, which is why it's conditioned to include the encroaching permit from Caltrans.
I see. Okay, any other questions? In my case, we'll take it out to public comment. I see the developers here. Mr. St. George, would you like to speak on this at all or?
Oh, you guys are doing great.
Okay, uh, is there, do I see a hand up online there? Who is, I can't read it. Oh, Susan Bott, uh, would you like to speak now, please?
Yes, please. I'm Susan Bott, here representing the Save Our Stars Committee of WeWatch. Our concern with this project at seventeen fourteen Mission Drive is adherence to the lighting standards in place in the city of Solvang. Under proposed lighting, the apothecary included. Under proposed lighting, the applicant included light fixtures that do not meet the objective standards consistent with solving municipal code section eleven dash ten A dash seven C. The proposed lighting does not direct light downward. City staff proposes a condition that lighting fixtures be shielded and direct light downward. Also, outdoor lighting affixed to poles shall not exceed fifteen feet in height. WeWatch agrees with city staff that the project should comply with these standards. We thank city staff for advocating enforcement of these dark sky measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Is there anybody else who would like to speak online? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and action. Any any further discussion? None. Can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Do we need to spell out exactly what we're approving?
So the motion to approve there would have been for what is recommended in the staff report if there are no other modifications that you're proposing.
Okay, there are no modifications. So the proposal is as presented by staff?
Yes.
So and did we have a second?
Yes, I seconded.
So moved and seconded and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes four oh. Okay, there are no discussion items. Planning commissioners comments, Brian and Brandon, I think you had one.
Thank you.
Maybe wait for Commissioner Peterson to reenter the room here if he's still at the meeting. There he is.
What'd you do? Unplug her? It was passed without changes. You're interesting. So we can go ahead and start with. Okay, so we're on planning commissioner comments. So does anybody have any comments to make?
I had just one, actually a question rather than a comment, which is just if we could get a quick brief update in regards to the lawsuit and the Wildwood project.
I have no comment on that.
Thought that might be the answer, but.
Just to add, this is a pending matter that the city is working through with council. So there's no comment on the lawsuit at this time.
Okay.
Only question I had was an update maybe from staff about our joint meeting on the signs or design review.
Yeah, I'll cover that in our my director's report.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, well, moving on to planning manager report.
All right, thank you. So we only have one item for our designer review committee at this point. It's our pre-application for Vibeborg Road. It's expansion of Cottage Hospital. It's actually like sort of a room addition, but they're proposing an MRI room. So which actually is a great, it's a big thing. So really good thing for our valley to have that type of services here locally versus going up to Santa Barbara. So that's going to be currently our one item. As on April twenty eighth, we'll be meeting at the city council to discuss the outcomes from the joint meeting. So and that one will basically go over the direction that we were given. Hopefully go over our proposed work plan to basically bifurcate things. So what city staff envision is working through chunks and pieces of the sign ordinance, taking it to DRC as sort of our vehicle for that aspect. And then for the design handbook, Lisa will be heading up the design handbook. So so we'll be working in tandem and we'll be bringing these items beginning in May. So again, doing chunks at a time and really trying to deep dive and then culminate something with a check in and hopefully end of summer, check in with the council to basically see where we're at. And then hopefully have everything greenlit with a whole new set of packages, including hopefully any new state law changes from for ADs and stuff packaged into one whole thing at the end of the year as a part of our annual updates that we will start to be doing this year. So that that's that's where we're at with the joint meeting. Currently, as far as our city staff, we're processing quite a few applications. If as you saw in your list, we have a CUP for a nightclub, believe it or not. I don't think people know that. It's just quietly there. It's the Alsal sellers. We do have a development permit for units above Den Market Square. City staff has deemed that incomplete, but we'll be working with the applicants to get that rolling. We have another pre-app for Frederick's Square. That's actually in my lap. We just completed a TUP for solving brew. They're they're actually proposing a temporary kitchen to be placed on site while they work through their building permit process to redo their their permanent kitchen. So again, we approve that. We're working with the owner diligently to get his permits issued. I know he's working with the Santa Barbara County Department of Health, ABC, et cetera. So hopefully they'll be reopened soon. And actually, they're going to reopen a good portion of their building as well, which is good. The only the kitchen will be blocked off from public access. And this was after a review from our building official and our city building inspector on Thursday. We're also processing quite a few building permit applications for remodels and pools. So a lot of work is ongoing. And I got no items for the May PC, so you might get a nice little spring afternoon off for next month. So I don't see anything on the horizon unless something in the emergency hopper pops up. So that concludes my report.
Any questions on the report?
No.
I have just one. The at the solving brew is that red truck that's in the parking lot. Is that going to be the temporary kitchen?
I I believe so. I was not available on Thursday to go take a look at it, but I believe that is the one. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody has any questions? I guess we can adjourn the meeting at six thirty five.